I will call the December the 3rd meeting of the Franklin Town Council to order. The first thing we want to do is just take a moment of silence and reflect back on Doc Ed Henson, who is the mayor here for many, many years in several different terms. Ed was a very close, personal friend of mine. I never had the opportunity to work with him as a town official, but he was a very dear friend over the years. But he did work a lot, and Mr. Collins worked with him. And I'm going to ask Joe to just kind of give us a little reflection on Doc Ed.
Ed Henson is a man like you maybe have never met before. He was mayor for a 10-year stretch from '83 to '93. Then he was out for two, then he was mayor '95 to '97, then he was out, and then he was mayor '99 to 2003. He had his heart for the town of Franklin maybe as much as any elected official that we've had. Oh, he could make you mad. But he would get in his car and he would go to law on his side, and he knew who'd see when he got there. And if it meant working with the other side, so to speak, for the betterment of the community and the county, the well-considering Governor Martin, do it, just for the best of him. I was in his chair before I was in the first grade. When I was in the first grade, he took me, my two brothers, a couple of the Jamison boys, loaded us all, and took us to the Ford McPhill to watch the tourists. My mother worked for him. He'd call you out, but you knew deep down he was talented, and he had made the county in his heart and in his mind. He didn't want any. He didn't want anybody to know he died. He didn't. That's just him. But we reflect on it, and we honor him because he deserves that. He was a great man for the town. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any of the other board members that want to say anything? Most of you, I know that you were very involved.
Yeah.
Yeah. But anyhow, we'll just remember Ed tonight and all the many things that he did. You're sitting in a building tonight that he had a great deal to do with. The old Ed Henson Bridge, the old town bridge. Now we have the new town bridge. But Ed was, as Mr. Collins said, he was very, very unusual, and he lived and breathed Franklin. All right, that being said...
I'll say just one thing.
Yes, ma'am. Please do.
He was really one of the very instrumental people in getting the Greenway up and running and paid for and so forth. He really worked hard on that, and that's how I mostly knew him.
And some of the festivals now, too.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. The next item of business, unless you want to do a, just take just a moment of silence. Thanks, folks. Appreciate it. All right. The pledge allegiance led by Vice Mayor Barbara McCray.
Please join me in saying the pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The next item is the approval of the November the 5th Town Council minutes. Any discussion on the minutes from the last meeting? Anybody have anything? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second. All in favor. Okay. Then the adoption of the December the 3rd Town Council agenda. Are there any additions, or do we want to move anything around on the agenda tonight? I will have just one thing. I'm going to introduce somebody at the very beginning, and it's not on the agenda, but it's just for an introduction of our new fire chief. Any changes, additions? Anybody want to shuffle anything around? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt it as presented.
So good. Second.
All in favor. Okay, moving right on along. Okay. I don't manage. I have five minutes after six. We have a rezoning petition for the Hinden properties, so I'll declare the public hearing open. Mr. Sutser, you're up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Your hearing is a rezoning petition for Hinden properties. They're requesting to have a property that's at the corner of Silo Road and Daddle Mountain Road to be rezoned from R1 to C2. It's currently a vacant piece of property owned by Duke Energy. This recently went to the planning board. The planning board met on this and had discussion and did vote to recommend the approval of this rezoning unanimously. In your package, you'll see the, an aerial with the four and a half acres drawn out with the current zoning. When you see it's the yellow of R1, and in our staff report with all the lay of the land and everything added out there. You also will find the consistency statement and the finding of facts with the approved, or the approved questions or answers of the general statute questions from the planning board. Do you have any questions?
We have one person signed up to speak. Mr. Tiller?
Yes.
Welcome tonight, sir.
Hey, thanks for having me.
Good to see you.
I just thought I would see if y'all had any questions.
Anybody have any questions on Mr. Tiller? I guess there, none being, anyone else want to speak? Or if not, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. All right, moving right on. We have one person signed up for the public session. The ground rules are five minutes limit. Dana Brimms?
Breznerhand.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Breznerhand.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Certainly.
My name is Dana Breznerhand, and I'm the owner of Going Places Travel. That's on 32 West Palmer Street. My coworker is Terry Talent. Becky Byrd is also in my office. She owns Travels with Becky. Our office is the Drive-Thru Bank that used to be First Union Bank years ago. So if any of you know that office, some of you've done business with us, so you know our quarters are very, very small. We're looking to locate, relocate. So if you have been in our office, you know our quarters are really hard to work in. So we found some affordable rental space. It's down from the high school. It's a brick house. It's where Mortgage Financial is. It's 244 Quarter Street. However, there's a problem with the signage there. It's some residential mixed property. So the largest freestanding sign that can be there based on the sign ordinance is 32 square feet. The Mortgage Financial's already used that amount of signage on the road. So for us to be able to move in, we definitely have to have some kind of sign to advertise our business. Right now, there's, including my business, there's three other businesses looking to rent space there. So that amount of space will not work for advertising purposes. I understand that the lawyer for Mortgage Financial came to the sign, I don't know what you call it.
Planning ordinance.
The ordinance board.
Planning board.
Yeah, that's what it's called.
I guess.
And they tried to get a variance for the sign from the sign committee, and they were denied. And that was based on the one business being in the building. I would like for that ordinance board to relook at it based on more businesses being in the building and as well as the size of that building. We can't move if we don't have signage. I understand it takes a process for this to happen, but our lease, we have a lease agreement, too, and that, there's a deadline on that. We signed a six-month lease, and that's up at the end of December. And I don't know if you can tell me, you know, what your input on this is, if you think we have a case, if you think that they might look at it differently this time, you know, based on more than one person, one business going in there versus four. Right now, there's four, there would be four businesses. What do you think? Do you think that they would look at it any differently?
I'm going to refer to our council.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. And I hope you'll understand that the comment period is for sort of reception of comments by the council, so we generally advise them, you can't get into, it's not a discussion, you can't get into specifics of the problem. I think, I don't know whether, when this was looked at, because this, I think, may have been before my time. I don't recall anything about it. So I think I would invite you to let, let's talk this over with the sign administrator, Justin, and myself, and see what process might be available.
Okay. And Council, if I may, Mayor, Board as well, I believe the land use administrator, he would like to speak on this really quick, too, because he is aware of it.
Mr. Sutser.
Thanks for listening.
Certainly.
Yeah, I think, I think something, this is something I could see where it could be an issue, because where there's owned neighborhood mixed use. And neighborhood mixed use is being mostly residential with a little bit of commercial. But when you have an instance like where they are, where they're trying to have, since a multi-tenant facility in a residential area that's perfectly legal, I can see the issue with the signage. So I think looking at it going forward, like with the text amendment, very similar to the one we did about two years ago, allowing more, different sizes per different zones. So if it's, you know, we allowed, if it was owned a certain way, it was a bigger size. So it's more increments for multi-tenant facilities. I think something similar that would work for them. It wouldn't change, wouldn't then be changed anywhere if somebody was a single business have a really big sign. It would still protect the small sizes in the residential and mixed-use districts. So I think it was something we could look at during the ordinance review and then go, come back in and have you have something in January.
Which, by the way, we have, we're going to have an ordinance review committee meeting in two weeks, and this is one of the things, not this particular issue, but the sign ordinance as a whole that is...
Can I ask, is this, is this next to Heritage Hollow? Is this, is that the building?
Yeah, just around.
So you don't have anything, though? I know she's on the timeframe of the end of December. You said your lease is up the end of December.
Yeah.
I know we can't say, but if you don't foresee, how quick could she be up and running if she didn't?
Yeah, legally, I don't have anything that I can do.
But I mean, it would have to come back before us in January.
And it's going to be a little more protective even than that, because it's land use. So I mean, if you're, if you're going to review a change to it, that would look like bringing you a, you know, it's probably a three-month process to say you need to schedule a public hearing. We need to get you a draft first, schedule a public hearing, hold the public hearing considerate, so we're ways out.
I just didn't want her to go in thinking, you said it's a six-month lease that you do, so that she's aware.
And see, currently, in the residential and the mixed-use districts, they're only allowed 32 square feet of signage for a freestanding sign. And when you get into something where you have three or four tenants, you're breaking it up where it's really hard to see. And in that, then it becomes a safety issue, somebody trying to see a sign they can't read as they pass, so some of it should be looked at.
Okay, so...
Is there a distance thing between signs? I mean, there's quite a bit of frontage there on the road. Could there be a couple of different independent signs on that frontage, or?
The sign ordinance states that you can have a second sign if you have a second entrance that has at least 100 foot of frontage. So we now really only have one frontage, you're only allowed one sign.
How many feet do they have of frontage, do we know?
I don't know off the top of my head. It's pretty much a...
It's just one big parking?
Big, one big, full-in parking lot, so it's, no, it might be 100-plus feet. I wouldn't think it's over 200 feet, though.
So how do we proceed?
Well, I would always urge you to be cautious about the whole council getting involved in how land use, you know, regulation you're having in place applies to one property. There's a way to work that through, and I don't know what happened with that particular one about applying for a variance, and apparently that got, I don't know when or under what circumstances.
Can we start that at the ordinance review committee? Okay.
I think it'd be a good place to start.
That, right now, I think is the best answer we can give. We'll start the process, and that's in two weeks that the ordinance review committee is meeting.
December 17. Yes, sir.
Okay. I hope that'll help you, if we can maybe get it started as quick as we can.
Regardless, can you put a temporary sign up until this gets figured out?
I spoke with them. There's currently not a sign on the building. They could put a sign within the, what's required. They could put one up like a ban or something until, if they wanted to, but then there's still the mercy of, if it gets changed.
This would not preclude you from moving into the building. I mean, you're ready to move into the building, and then we've got to get the sign worked out. Is that, am I calling that right?
Well, yeah, but then if there's two others that's coming, you know, it's just going to be impossible for three of us, more to go, three to go, if we have to all deal with the sign factor, you know, if it's not going to go. I mean, really, four people can't be on this little bit of sign. If it fell through, the sign would not work for four businesses to be on that little sign.
I guess we'll have to go back to what we said, that we'll, we'll start looking at it in the ordinance review committee. That's the best I can do for you tonight, so, you know. We will look at it.
What is the zoning for Heritage Hollow?
It's the neighborhood mixed use.
Anybody else, any further comment? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate y'all being here so much. The next item is, I wanted to shuffle around. I want to recognize and introduce our new fire chief, Mr. Breedlove. Matt, I'll even give you the floor if you'd like to have it, sir. We're very proud to announce Mr. Breedlove as our new chief.
Yes, sir. I would like to come up and just take a minute here to tell you thank you. I am extremely honored to be in this position. I've got a heart that is passionate for Franklin and the Mayfair County community. I was born and raised here, and I'm looking forward to this opportunity and to serve the citizens of Mayfair County and the town of Franklin. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for your support and your opportunity. I will serve the town. Let's make that be said, thank you, and I look forward to working with you, too.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. The next item is the board action on rezoning petition for Hinden properties. So it's, the floor is open for discussion. Are there any additional questions? Who's up on that? Councilor, you up on that?
I'm familiar with the application, can try to answer any questions.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. That's, that's the public hearing that we just held. Yes. Long, long week so far. Okay, so any further questions from the board you want to bring up before we vote on it? If not, I'll entertain a motion, go ahead and adopt it as presented.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor. Okay, that takes care of that. Okay. The presentation of the Town of Franklin Audit for Fiscal Year 2017. Mr. Allen, you're up, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, before I get sorted, I would just like to say thank you for allowing the Stars to perform your audit. All right, so I'd like to get sorted and talk about a couple of the audit highlights. I did issue an unmodified opinion, which is also known as an implied opinion, which this means that we found no material misstatements that led us to believe the financial statements were misleading to the reader. The report has been submitted and accepted by the LGC. We would also like to take this time to thank your staff. Everyone in and around the finance office has been great to work with. I know that you may only see us two or three times a year, however, we are in contact somewhat throughout the year. Everyone's always very helpful. You guys are also very welcoming when we're in here. Furthermore, I'd like to discuss the total fund balance of the general fund. As you can see, it increased $189,447, or 6.68 percent. And we increase, we attribute this increase mainly to the increase in fire tax revenues, which you can find within the other taxes and license category. Now I'd like to talk about the fund balance position in the general fund. And as you can see, this is a calculation from the LGC that's used to evaluate units. You can also see that you guys have an increase in available fund balance. That's what you can spend from. And then the stabilization by state statute line, that is merely the accounts receivable that are not set by deferred revenues. So furthermore, the available fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, you can see that you guys went from 51 percent fiscal year 17 to 63 percent fiscal year 18. That's an increase of 12 percent. And what this represents is 8 percent is usually what represents a monthly supply of expenditures on hand. At 63 percent, the town of Franklin has right at eight months of expenditures. And this is an increase from six and a half last year. And I'd also like to point out that every municipality is unique in circumstances, so we cannot offer a direct comparison, but we would like to say that a town the size of Franklin, your fund balance is healthy. Next, I'd like to discuss the general fund revenues. As you can see, we had the ad-halorm taxes at 44 percent, the unrestricted intergovernmental at 30 percent, and the other taxes and revenues at 20 percent. With the ad-halorm taxes, you can see that there was a decrease of approximately 17 percent, which is less than 1 percent of the balance, so it was very comparable to the prior year. The unrestricted intergovernmental revenues, which include the sales tax, utility tax, ABC profit distribution, increased roughly 14 percent, which is right out 1 percent, which is also comparable to the prior year. Next, we have the other taxes and license, and this is where we saw the major increase. That was in the fire tax that I mentioned earlier, and the overall increase in your other taxes and licenses was approximately $150,000, or 21.35 percent. Next, I'd like to discuss the general fund expenditures. Our top three, we have safety at 52 percent, general government at 26 percent, and transportation To discuss the general government expenditures in detail, you can see that there was a decrease in the prior year of around $111,000, or 9.16 percent. This decrease is primarily due to a decrease in capital outlay from the prior year, which as you may know, purchased the killing software in the prior year. Next, we have the public safety expenditures. These expenditures increased from the prior year around 62 percent, or 62,000, or 3 percent. The increase from the prior year was primarily due to higher operating expenses. And lastly, regarding the expenditures, we'd like to discuss the transportation. Transportation decreased around $35,000, or 6.94 percent. The decrease from the prior year was primarily due to an overall decrease in expenditures operating and capital outlay as well. Now to discuss the water and sewer operations, you can see the unrestricted net position in water and sewer fund is your working capital and fund balance that was available for spending. You can see it did increase. There was a slight decrease in revenues and a little bump in expenditures due to your That concludes my presentation. Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, do we have any questions? Councilor? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, guys.
It's nice to have you with us here tonight.
Yes, thank you so much for allowing me to present now.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I could digress for a second? I'm sorry, I don't know where my head is, but the board action on the rezoning petition for Hinden properties, is that in the corporate limits?
It's in the ETJ.
It is in the ETJ, so it's already annexed?
No.
It's not?
No. No, so your zoning, you know, your zoning area is the corporate limits plus a mile outside of that.
Okay.
And your, the zoning authority applies in all of that area.
Can we come back to that? That's not germane to this right now. Let us come right back to it.
I wanted to ask, is it Mr. Miller?
Taylor's name.
Taylor. I just wanted to ask Mr. Miller, if this is not in our ETJ annexed, would you guys be receptive to being annexed by the town?
Oh, yeah, well, I've understood that that's usually done in two separate independent steps, so...
Okay, then I'm learning something new, too.
Yeah, it was huge to me, too. Bronx, Ohio is a little different. Usually in Georgia, you have to be annexed at the time.
Do we want to do that now? Do they want to be annexed? Or do we want to wait?
There's, so we have that tied into some other development process, like the utilities, there's a consideration then.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I just didn't...
And you legally cannot do that ahead of time with the rezoning, because it's a contract zone, so you, and, yeah. If it's developed, there'll be an occasion to consider...
I just didn't understand the process. Wanted some clarity. Thank you. Sorry to...
I've got a big flow chart, if you want to see.
Can we get a flow chart? Yes. I would love to have a flow chart.
Okay, let's go back to the business at hand. That is, I'll entertain a motion if there are no further questions about the audit, to accept the audit as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept, and I just also want to say thank you to Kyra and Summer and everyone else who works so hard to keep everything moving as well as it does.
Well, I think the good thing is we're in a little better position than we were last year.
That's a good thing.
And I think there's some accolades need to be handed out. Thank y'all.
Absolutely. And I do make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, good to go.
They let them stop saying "unqualified opinion." Oh, for years, watching people crass their heads and go, "Are you qualified or aren't you?"
Okay. The next item of business is a discussion on the Town of Franklin Alcohol Beverage Control Board. It's up for discussion. Okay, I want to call on the members from the ABC Board if you'd like to speak to this matter. Mr. Patillo, welcome.
Mr. Mayor and Board, my name is Sissy Patillo, and I'm here on behalf of the ABC Board, but I didn't bring any samples. And seriously, though, it has been brought to our attention that there's some of you that have some concerns about the ABC Board and/or the ABC store. And I hope after I present this information that this will be cleared up. Franklin ABC has been in business for 24 years, and out of 24 years, she's been profitable for 24 years. Plus, we have had 24 claim audits. And during this time, we have given the town $1,396,360. And during this time, we have given the town $1,396,360. And we have never been late with our quarterly payments. Our store takes care of all of our in-house expenses, such as if we need a forklift, we buy it. If we need a new air conditioner, we buy it. We take care of all of those, and fortunately, we have not had to have help from the town at this point. 65 percent of our customers are female, and it is important that they feel comfortable coming into our store. The store is attractive, it's well-stocked, and it's impeccably clean. In fact, we've been told that we have one of the nicest stores in our district. And you know, this doesn't happen by itself. Speaking of districts, we have 11 stores in our district. Out of the 11, only three have five-member members. The other seven have three-member members. And actually, you have 11 stores and 10 boards because you have one board that takes care of two stores, and that is Jackson County, which takes care of Silva and Cassius. We have had a three-member board for 24 years, and it has problems with our board. And I think the money it would cost you to go to a five-member board could be spent more wisely by the town. And of course, that is your prerogative to do that. It would cost between $3,000 and $4,000 a year to go to a five-member board, money of which could be distributed to the nonprofit organizations, which are request funding and what you're having to cut. As the old man once said, "If it ain't broke, we'll fix it." With all of this being said, Franklin ABC is very fortunate to have the management that we have, and I commend all of the employees. I would also like to invite any of you to come out to the store, sit down with our manager, and go over our operations. Do any of you have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Any questions?
I'm not hearing any, Ms. Patillo, so thank you very much.
I do want to call you something.
Pardon?
I give you a little more time for the carry.
Oh, okay.
For your information, I do have two full-time employees, and we have six part-time.
Mr. Satchel, can we just turn that thing off?
Negative, personnel.
This is just a fact sheet.
I couldn't hear what you said, Sissy. You said six full-time employees. How many full-time employees?
No, we have eight employees. We have two full-time and one in six.
I'm sorry, the noise just came out at the wrong time. Thank you.
This is just showing our inventory, monthly sales, and daily sales, and a few other things.
Okay. Is any further discussion from the board about the ABC?
Yeah. Do you have any questions?
Oh, yes, sir. Did you want to speak, sir?
Yes.
Yes, sir, welcome.
Thank you. I think I can speak loud and clear without having to have that. Especially being in this place. Now, first, I want to say we are not questioning your authority to make a board of 49 people if you want to, okay? But I think we need to look at some things before we do that. Mr. Patillo addressed a good many of them. First, why are we wanting to make it a bigger board? And I understand from some comments I've heard, so more people will be involved, okay? I understand that. Yes, it would be great for more people in the town to be involved in things that are going on. But I know, I think I've been on there about five years. This is our second person we're replacing. If I'm not mistaken, and I think it's probably been pretty much, and Mr. Mason can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think for even through all of the years, you don't get more than a couple of people to apply. So why are we, if we've still only got very few people applying, are we going to go out and beg people to be on this board that don't even want to be on this board, just so people in the town can be involved? That doesn't make sense to me as a board member, or as a citizen of the town, because, again, as Mr. Patillo mentioned, you're spending money that we think can be used more, maybe used better in other ways than that. And as you mentioned, and all the audits have been great, so it's been running smoothly for all these years. Again, I'm not trying to say that it couldn't be bigger, but there needs to be some good reasons that it needs to be bigger. If you think the job's not, the board's not doing its job, as Mr. Patillo said, come out to our board meetings. Every one of you is invited, every month if you want to come. We've got nothing to hide. Mr. Mason does a great job of keeping us informed and keeping the state off our backs and off your backs, because the audits have been great every single time. And if you get too many people on there, then it makes it a lot harder to even get Usually, and I've heard the comment that we only have two people on there now, and we need, so if we had five, we'd have more on there. Yeah, we'd have four if somebody, we were replacing somebody, okay? But still, that doesn't accomplish anything. What I'd like to ask you tonight to do, and I assume this council couldn't do this, I don't know who is not, Mr. Henny, I'm sure can tell you. We usually don't miss more than, have more than one meeting with two people when somebody's being replaced. The only reason we are having two meetings, if you don't do something tonight, is because the names have not been turned in to us, it's those who applied, so we can't give you a recommendation. So what I would like to see you do is for someone to give those names to Mr. Mason in the morning, and it has to take phone calls or whatever to get approval by the board to move on us choosing somebody and getting on with it, so we don't have our second meeting with only two people, because our next meeting is next Monday. So we want to move on with it. It's just that we've not been allowed to at this point. It's not us holding up the process. So my suggestion is, let's move on with this person, whoever we choose, and you'll be okay with it, I hope. And then, down the road, if you want to make it a bigger board, then make it a bigger board. But let's get on with getting a third person on there now, immediately, so we don't put it off. Thank you.
Okay, so, Councilor, how would we proceed on that? Can we give the two names to the board with the understanding of how much weight we give to the ABC Board's recommendation?
If you're going to take a step like that, I think the only way to do it that I'd be comfortable with anyway recommending to you is to authorize your town manager to make the appointment of whomever the ABC Board recommends of those two, or I think there's two applicants, right?
There's two applicants at this time.
I don't, we try to avoid at all costs a poll, and if it was a call around to say, is everybody, what's your vote outside of the meeting that's, you know, it's not really in the open meetings law to do that. So if that was to be, you know, your intent, that's how I would recommend you do it.
Okay, yes, Mr. Mason.
Did the board not recommend one of the names?
No. The application process, when it was advertised, it was advertised to fill an unexpired term, and that application ran in the Franklin Press, I believe, from the end of September to the deadline was October 29th. So the names that we have were turned in October 29th, and then we had our council meeting in November when the discussion came up. So those names have not been turned over, no doubt.
What names have been turned in?
The two names we have turned in to fill that position have been Mr. Ron Winkoff and Mr. Farrell Jameson.
No others?
Not.
During that time period?
During that time period.
Right, but there's later been an application?
Later, there has been some inquiries, and I can say the name if you guys would like. Mr. Jacob Reche from Smart Pharmacy has reached out to me and has expressed an interest in serving as well. I received an email from him.
But we only have two applicants that have applied for an unexpired term.
Yes, ma'am, that would be great.
We have no applicants that have applied if we went, if the board was so inclined to appoint a five-member board, we just got, we're not there yet.
No, the two applicants that applied at the time, because they weren't, as no one was aware, the decision of this board, they did apply for that unexpired term of Mr. Swank.
And that deadline passed?
That, the two applicants I received, the deadline was October 29th.
And it was published?
It was published, yes.
Okay.
The board could choose to go from a three to a five-person board.
Yes, sir.
And they could make appointments of the three names given that, correct?
You could. So first off, to run back to the statute about the size of the board, it starts off with the initial proposition that the ABC Board shall consist of three or five members. So when you start out, you got to say you want three or five. I do think that by and large, three is the more, is the most common, from what I understand. And that's what the board bottom did to begin this. The statute only says that if the board, if I, the board finds a, determines a five-member board is preferable, the appointing authority, which is you, the terms of the two new members shall be for three years. It doesn't put much meat on the bones about how you go about doing that. I would think that you would want to, I mean, you've had two folks apply for what then was, or what is currently the only opening you have of that unexpired term, and it was specifically for that. I would think if you're going to create two new seats, you would give some time. First off, I hadn't tried to get us to where we do everything in writing by written resolutions, so everybody's got in front of them what we're doing. And so I would think adopting a resolution to do that at your next meeting would be the way I'd prefer you do it. If you were to go ahead and create those two new seats, I would still think you would want to give the folks that have, you know, given their, put their names into the ring for the unexpired term, an opportunity to say what, you know, if they prefer one or the other, and see who else might be interested, knowing now that there's two new seats. So, but you do have the authority to add those, and there's not a whole lot of direction about how to do it.
So one procedure would be to appoint someone for the unexpired term, or, yeah, appoint that, and then open back up for a month's time or so. Presumably, the two others might rethrow their hat in the room, and maybe others, and then choose from those or whatever to go to five, if that's the will of the board.
You do have the authority to do that. The only other thing I'd point out is, is if you did move ahead with an appointment, you, and I'm not saying it's not legal for you to do, but you would have gone around what had been your process of, you know, the board is having somebody appointed to it, makes a recommendation to you, and you fill it based on their recommendation. I'm not saying, again, not saying you don't have the authority to make an appointment. Just that's what you have been doing, and that hasn't happened here because this discussion was started.
But right now, the issue is, we have two applicants for an advertised vacancy with a term period in which the applicants had to be back in. That's the issue right now. The other is a whole separate issue of whether we're going to, in a meeting without it ever being brought before the public completely change the complexity of the ABC Board without public input, this is sort of the way that I'm reading it right now, is that we have two issues. We, I don't think we can vote on, I may be wrong, but I don't think we can vote on both issues in one motion or at one meeting.
I can't tell you you don't have the legal authority to do that. I don't advise it. I think, again, and I think if you're going to, I'd prefer you to see, to see you do most anything you're going to do by written resolution, if it doesn't have to be a more forceful document than that, like an ordinance. So, but you do have the authority to do it. How you go about doing now, like I say, if you did it tonight, I don't, there's no requirement in the statute of having any public hearing on it, per se.
No, I'm not saying a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
I'm just saying public input. Let's see what the public might have to say about this. I mean, they do own the ABC Board. We regulate it and manage it, but the public owns it.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I've talked about it at a couple of meetings, and I guess I'm the one that brought it up because I want to see more people on more boards. No matter what this board does tonight, I want to say I don't think the ABC Board's doing a bad job. I met with Ms. Patillo and the ABC Store manager, and the store is really nice, and it's ran really well. But I think there's broad consensus that the store they're located in now is very costly, and they're having to spend money on repairs in that facility that it may not be fair for them to have to spend that much in rent and have to spend that much to repair that building. This has been an ongoing conversation for years and years and years. It's a weird marriage between the ABC Board and the town. They want more communication with us and to work with us better. I think we want more communication with them and to work with them better, because whatever they do benefits the town directly by state statute. Isn't it that all the profits from an ABC Board have to go to a town, the town that they're in? So I mean, it's a weird, it's a weird relationship, and we should all be able to get along and communicate freely without anybody feeling like they're being attacked, because that's the last angle I wanted to approach this from, was hurting people's feelings. I think we need inclusivity. I do think we could use more heads and some more ideas, and everybody working together to figure out a long-term solution that makes the ABC Store better and benefits the Town of Franklin.
Let me ask you this. Is that your sole reason?
Absolutely.
To want to make this change? And let me ask you this, this was the first time you've been to the ABC Store and talked about this issue. Secondly, and I think the public needs to know this, the ABC Board meetings are subject to the same public records and open meetings as this council is, so that anyone can attend these meetings, and there's been, to my knowledge, does anybody much ever show up to listen to the situation? We just, I just got back from Raleigh. There is another issue that could affect ABC Stores across the state right now, and that is the privatization. The League of Municipalities just passed a, in an advocacy goal session, that they want to keep the ABC Boards the way that they are right now, and do away basically with privatizing the ABC thing. So I think I need some guidance from council about where are we, where are we going, what are we going to do on this situation? Tonight, are we going to postpone things? What, just where do we stand right now?
I'm not going to say.
Yes, sir.
It's complicated, Bob. It's not that complicated. I don't, I don't think.
I know. It's not complicated, right.
We're looking, absent the ad valorem tax and the sales tax, revenue from the ABC Store is probably our best chance of having money come in, which we're not requiring people to pay through where they live and all of that. I see where we're at $230,000 a month, that's probably, whatever the math is, $2.5 billion a year. And I think that there is reasonable grounds to believe that $70,000, which is very, very, very small percentage on $2.5 million a year, could be brought in. We're looking at about two years' time with this last extension of the lease, and my understanding is that coincides with pretty much the retirement date of the manager. So there's going to be some serious decisions coming up in the next some serious decisions coming up in the next two years. I saw three businessmen, Farrell and Jacob and Ron, all expressing interest. I don't see how we can go wrong with looking at it. I really, I went with Cissy, I talked to Todd. Cissy and I have had this discussion. This is nothing new.
Who am I talking to this time?
It, we can't stay where we're at, but we stay where we're at longer and longer and longer, and I don't have any. I think that if we get, if there is people, business people willing to serve on the board, knowing that this is the best way, you can run a good clean store, a good tidy store, and it's, and it'd be profitable, but a lot of it is obviously where you're at. I think what we should do as a board is, Farrell Jamison, I would expect was, is their nominee of the two, put Farrell on, vote to go to five, advertise for a time period, a month or whatever it will take, if we get any more than the two that started there. I guess they would have to technically read up, and then make a decision on filling it out and going to five. Now, I've spoken with some of y'all. What's the West Side say?
I'd like to say something.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Well, I've, I've got some concerns, some I may, that are not, that are specific to ABC, some that are not, that I might wanna mention at the closing statements about some things. But we asked Ms. The Town Manager to give us some information, and nobody's asked for that. I mean, I feel like we're jumping the gun. I see it as, we got a vacant seat, it needs to be filled. Then, if we decide to go to five member, but I think we're jumping the gun. I specifically remember last month, Mr. Henning saying, "It's real easy to go to five, but it sure is hard to backtrack and go the other way."
And that is true. If you, and I'm sorry for, if you do appoint and go to five, can't go back to three without getting ABC, State ABC Commission approval to do it.
Do boards get denied when they try to go back to three?
I don't know of anybody ever doing it, but I can try to find out.
I just don't see, and that's something I'm gonna address at the end. I feel that we're putting stuff on an agenda for discussion, and then we're voting without having all the facts and information before us. And, I mean, that's...
What more is it that you're willing?
Why do we want to do it in the first place, other than just because?
I have an answer, because actually, and Bob, I'm shocked you think I'm bringing this up for the first time now, because actually, it was one of my first meetings. I was shocked the ABC Board only had three people. And I inquired then, I think, when there was an appointment made, maybe in January, February of this year. And so when I went to ethics training, I actually asked, I said, "If there's a three-member board and two of them are in a room together, how's that not a violation of the meeting laws?" And they said, "It is." And I said, "That makes our board, I mean, they can't go out to dinner without it being a violation of the open meeting laws in the state of North Carolina."
No, no, you misinterpreted that, I think.
They can't go out to dinner and talk board business.
That's right. Or take action.
By the way, I have to, I have to stop here and ask you all, I think it's a great idea for you to go to, go attend some ABC Board meetings. Don't go as a whole forum of this board, because if I ever see a headline that says, "Town has illegal meeting at liquor stores," we're never gonna recover.
If three of us are together, it's a violation of the open meeting laws, isn't it?
Not, it depends on why you're together.
Yeah, you can't talk board business.
That's right. And you can't decide to do X, Y, Z, whatever it may be. We've got members of the fourth estate here, I think, that would back that up in a heartbeat.
Leave the Russians out of it.
Yes, ma'am, you sure may.
The thing is, I'm not saying that a five-member board is not a good thing. I don't know. I don't know what they, that board does and what they do every time. I haven't been to a meeting. I don't feel that just because we're sitting here in a discussion that we're rushing to it. That's all I'm getting at, is that, why is there a rush? Why can't we appoint another board member and it be some things brought back? Because, as I said, we still haven't heard what other count, because we asked Ms. Wooder to bring back some things, and that's not even been...
And I can touch on a couple. I mean, I've reached out.
Please, yes, ma'am.
If you would like. I have reached out to the town of Highlands, to their town manager, Josh Ford, and the total distribution from their ABC was 75,000 on an annual fiscal year basis. Also reached out to the town of Silva. Of course, they're a little bit different since you've got Jackson County. They are actually at 160,000 annually. Again, you've got Jackson County and Western involved there. And plus, one thing that their manager noted was, of course, again, the issue that they do on their store. So that's why your profit's there. But those are two I have reached out to.
It's 160?
160,000. That was for town of Silva.
Towns two, though?
Yes, because you got Jackson County's profit.
Right. Let me suggest real briefly, regardless of what you do about more members, what decision you make, I think it might be a good idea, and it's something that other entities do all the time, to have an intergovernmental, a joint meeting. It wouldn't be anything in the world wrong with having an announced meeting, to have both boards sit down and just, you can just discuss where, you know, where you...
That should be a yearly meeting for just open communication between people. I mean, we could all, we could make the situation better for everybody, whether it's a three-person board or a five-person board. Open communication is key to success.
We, we have open communication right now.
I don't think...
To give me an example of where we have not had, that if somebody has a question, they cannot get it.
I'd rather not.
Okay. That's, that's fine. I've been here for quite a while, and I have never had a complaint on the ABC Store in any fashion whatsoever. It's, it's well-run. I've been to AB Stores and ABC Stores in South Carolina, where, Lord have mercy, that was terrible. This is what happens with privatization. And I just, for the love of me, I just have not heard a valid reason for changing something that has operated beautifully for 20-something years.
And where more outright indirectly the state would be on our case?
You, we, year after year, rank in the upper, what, 5% or 10% of ABC Stores across the state.
Not in profitability, Bob. Bob has had a very lower end profitability.
And that may, well, that may...
To me, that's what this is all about. Getting money from the ABC Store so we don't have to raise the ad valorem taxes.
All right.
And we've got three applicants here, equally, uniquely situated. They run businesses. We get business people who are, who have to make payroll, know the bottom lines. We're looking at a new, maybe a new location, and maybe a new manager, right here in a timeframe that's important. I just think it would be in the best interest of the town to go to five, if in fact, we need to go ahead and appoint one today for the unexpired term. I have no problem with that. If it means that we need to do some additional advertising before we figure out the next two, now, but that's where I'm at. I want a different perspective.
But a lot of, a lot of...
My opinion.
Yeah, okay. A lot of your services that we render are not rendered for profitability. It's for service to the public. And I don't think we can overlook where we are, that people seem to be perfectly satisfied. And we went through that rather strongly a couple of years ago. Just a second. Ms. McCray wanted to mention something.
I was just, you on my opinion. I agree with Joe and Diana that we should go ahead and fill the seat, and then let's talk about the five-person board later. And I think the idea of doing it with the, with the board, have an intergovernmental meeting, if we can arrange that down the road, I think that would be helpful.
Ms. Patilla?
I was thinking, all the facts need to be gathered. I'm like, Diana, before you do anything.
Okay.
And I, I forgot. I got off track there. I'll just go early on.
All right. Well, this is where I'd like to come back to. If, if I'm understanding it correctly, we've got two issues. But some want to combine the two issues.
Well, we are, we're in business, that store was voted on by the, by our voters to enhance the town's, the call for not to support the town. And that's in the statute.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Ms. Sutton.
Oh, personally, I don't see how that can increase your profits, but the only way that profits are going to increase, in my opinion, and to do this right now, and I'm not being critical of the council, they don't give us money to do stuff, like a lot of ABC Stores do, state and counties or the city. If you move out of that building, yes, it is very expensive, and believe me, we have talked about this a lot. If you move out of that building, you will get zero money for a long time paying for the building we have to build and the land we have to buy.
And where are we going in the middle?
And, and that, you're gonna get no money. I mean, I'm not trying to...
You're paying $10,000 a month now.
Let him finish, Mr. Collins. Excuse me. Go right ahead, sir.
You're gonna, you're gonna pay more than that. And then, secondly, I heard our town man, town manager, the ABC Store, he's not retiring. We just renewed his contract. So he's not going anywhere. So that's not an issue as far as the ABC Board or manager has to choose another one.
Go ahead now, Ms. Collins.
If, if it's the will of the board, and if we do it in a timeframe that would allow us to make the decision either way, Mr. Mason told me in open meeting about his timetable. Maybe it's changed. People have a right to change timetables, but I'm not, I'm speaking from what he had told me. I didn't know any, any different on that. But if, if we were gonna do this, we would want to get the numbers statewide, they're all available, get the audits, to see all of the audits, to maybe get someone from the state of North Carolina to come and lead us. And Diana, that might be in your way of getting, our way of getting more informed on it. Do it within the next month or two, so if in fact, we do have that decision to go to five, then certainly, am I correct that the lease is up two years from January? I don't wanna misstate that.
It's three years.
Three years. Three years.
It was a three-year lease, and it was last January?
He signed it in, it was October, September.
Okay. So we're in that, we're in that timeframe?
We're in a three-year one.
Okay. Well, whatever it is, I personally, if in fact, the board wants to take a slower process, I do want the process to go slowly, but not, or to move forward and not, and not stop. And if that's, Barbara, is that more where you're, you're at? Adam, Brandon?
I'm, I'm feeling the way Diana was of, of let's go ahead and replace that third vacant seat. And truth be told, I think I need a little more convincing to think that we need five members. I feel like we've operated for a quarter century with three, and it's been okay. I don't fully see the need for two more members right now. I have to confess, I've never been to one of your meetings. I'm not sure what it is, what kind of decisions you guys have to make. I don't know what it is you guys deal with on a monthly basis. But as it stands now, I don't personally see the need for two extra board members. But I would like to go ahead and fill the third, the current vacant seat as soon as we can.
So that, I think that takes me right back, Council of the, about something we're talking about. Let's vote on one tonight. Or, it's not actually a vote, is it? It's just to move it to the, the two recommendations to the ABC Board. Excuse me, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I do agree with the first amendment entirely, and I kind of personally wouldn't mind making the motion to say that we go ahead and pass the ABC Board, give them those applicants, let them make a decision, and I'm perfectly fine with Summer's discretion.
Okay.
The town manager's discretion on that, because I'm not gonna disagree with the ABC Board's recommendation of either one of those applicants. After that, I do agree, different sides, different things, but I do think it sounds like it's a discussion that it wouldn't hurt to get more information on. It's not gonna hurt any of us.
That being said, would you like to make, is everybody okay if we make a motion and move on this issue?
On replacing the current vacant?
Oh, yes, Mr. Sutton.
I was just gonna ask, if you're gonna, if you're going to decide, go ahead and fill that position. I know he's not received anything in writing, so, Mr. En, you'll have to tell us whether to do this or not. But since you gave us the names, can we make a recommendation, and you vote on that person?
I think if you're ready to make it now, there's no law that says how to go back.
They gave us two names. We haven't received the names, so we didn't feel like we could legally give you a recommendation, since we didn't have the names. But since you mentioned the names tonight, that's what I wanna know if we...
And the names for any applicant for any of these positions, it's public record. So it's, yeah, it's, there's no problem at all with you sharing that.
I would recommend to go ahead and fill the positions or not.
Okay, good.
Do you know who?
And I'm kind of, pardon.
Do you know whom, how many names you have?
I would recommend Mr. Farrell Jamison. And the reason why that we feel, the board has talked about is that Farrell has been on the town board, he knows town government, he's worked with the fire department, and he also knows how to get along with people. And I recommend that.
All right. Counselor, I think I need help.
Well, now, before the council...
This is what I'm getting at. Are we in a position to accept or reject that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That being said...
I'll make a motion that we take the recommendation of the ABC Board and appoint Farrell Jamison to fill the unexpired term that was, he applied for.
Okay. Is there a second? There's a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Okay. So now we move on to gathering data.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one more?
You may, yes, ma'am.
That, when you start looking at the five-member board, or when that comes up, please be careful and really look, and you need to also research that to see who has five members and who doesn't have five members. But you're gonna have to go east of Asheville to find them.
I can, I can get that for you in the morning from the League of Municipalities.
But I need to, you need to talk to those people. Just don't pull something out of a hat and do it.
I will get it and share it, yes.
And please come to one of our meetings to see what we do before you make a decision on that. Honestly, if it's rocket science, it wouldn't be me.
You all would say it's simple, but it's okay. Would be, the board would be open to, with information being gathered, with financials, maybe somebody from the State ABC Board, whatever, to have in a fairly, in a fairly short time period, have a joint meeting to discuss this in more detail, with more numbers and more facts. You all will be open to that, correct?
Yes, and we have people from the state that, you know, they run us, and I have one of those.
And Ms. Collins, your manager and I have been talking about how to try to line this up. You usually have a January retreat, and that, this seems like a real good topic in a time, maybe, to set up a joint meeting, so.
Two things real fast. If I'm gauging this correctly, the current ABC Board is opposed to an increase in membership. Is that...
Increase in what?
The current board is opposed to an increased number.
I don't think we're opposed to that, Richard. We are opposed to the fact that you wanna put it out there and then vote on it, and you don't, a lot, there's been no discussion about it. Can you just, I mean, that's just like, on the baby, with the basket.
I'm receptive to discussion. I've, I've tried to discuss.
I mean, I think that, that's...
My second thing I wanted to say is, and this is what I'm worried about here, is this board meets a lot, and we're like, hey, it's a controversial issue, let's talk about it some more. And then we never hear about it again. And I don't want that to happen here. Last time, I think, we talked about alcohol in downtown, and we were gonna discuss it, we were gonna hear more about it, and that got squashed, and it got swept under the rug. And there's, there's taboo subjects that we're supposed to engage in and talk about and make decisions on. And sometimes they make us uncomfortable. And sometimes they make us uncomfortable, but that's okay. That's our job. It's our job to find information, talk to people, bring ideas together. I worry that we're gonna shirk responsibility and we're just gonna kick the can down the road. And I don't want that to happen. I think we need to address things head-on. There is gonna be a change in what's going on with the ABC board. Their lease is up in two years. They're gonna have big decisions to make. Let's don't kick the can down the road. Let's actually talk about it.
Okay. Any member of this council, any member of the public can say they want something on the agenda. You wanted to have something about the Greenway. It's on the agenda tonight, and you discussed it earlier. Okay, so the thing of it is, is we all bear a responsibility to bring up the issues that we're concerned about and get them on the agenda. Don't rely on Bob's memory about anything. And I mean, I just have to be honest about that, seriously.
What I'm trying to say, Bob, is don't vilify, we shouldn't vilify anybody on the ABC board because we disagree with them. You shouldn't vilify council member because they have an idea. It's...
No, no.
We should come into this objectively, thoughtfully, and have an honest, open discussion without prejudgment and without you being mad at me for talking about it.
What I'm saying, and I don't know that I'm mad about you, but what I am saying, Mr. Culpepper, is that any council member, among the public, this board is probably the most open governmental body I know of in western North Carolina. I mean, we thrive on it. I think you can ask the members of the fourth estate if we're forthcoming or not. We try to be, but every council member also has a responsibility for the issues that they are concerned with to make sure that they get on the agenda.
And they shouldn't be belittled for whatever it is that they're talking about.
If I belittle you, I apologize.
I'm not always talking about me.
Okay. If I belittle anybody, I apologize. Okay. Where are we now? We move on. We're gonna have a study. We're gonna get together with the ABC board. Yes, madam manager.
Yes, if I may, Mayor and Council, what I'll work with and I'll reach out to Mr. Mason as well. When we come back for our January 7th meeting, I'll have some dates available. That works for his board and throw some dates out for this board. So it's your January meeting. We'll have a date set up for January for this joint meeting, and I'll be glad to work with Mr. Mason to get all that information set up for some officials and stuff.
Couple of years ago, the League of Municipalities did a major study on ABC stores. I will get that for the board and get it printed off. Yeah, I'll get it. I sure will. Okay. Madam Finance Officer, do you want to weigh in with some budget amendments? Bring us something pleasant.
In your packet, there are four budget amendments. They are all insurance settlement checks to be appropriated to the vehicle maintenance line and various department budgets. The first one is the police department in the amount of $4,829. The second one is for water and sewer in the amount of $2,826. The third one is for facilities in the amount of $1,121. And the fourth one is for water and sewer in the amount of $2,826.
Let me ask you this. Does any of the board have any questions about a specific item? If not, can we just adopt them all, four? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to that effect. Okay, in a second. All in favor? All right, took care of that. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Forward the text amendment regarding a tasting room to the town planning board. Mr. Sutser, you're up, sir.
Yeah, doing it now is asking, just simply have an application. You should have it in your packet from Mr. and Mrs. Senna. They are asking if they apply for a text amendment for a change of the neighborhood mixed use district to modify it to allow tasting rooms as a use. They currently, they own a bona fide vineyard in Macon County. Tellico would like to open a tasting room at a location that currently is, would not allow it. So they'll be simply asking to have this board, planning board, so they can review it further and come back.
So you just need us to forward it to the planning board, not an issue of voting on it tonight or anything? Okay, all right. Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second? All in favor? Okay.
Anybody that wants to take a derelict building and improve it.
I am hearing a lot of people looking forward to this, let me tell you. Okay, discussion on the Town of Franklin ordinance regarding parking schedule. Mr. Sutser, you're again, sir.
I believe that a couple of months back, might have been August, or the town council tasked the planning board with a resolution to hold a public hearing and to review Chapter 75, the parking schedules for, in our ordinance, our code of ordinances. The planning board has done that for the past couple of months, held a public hearing on November the 13th, and then reviewed some of the comment that came out from that night. And also, in the meantime, was changing some texts in Chapter 75, which you have, you have in your packet. Everything highlighted in red and colored is the changes, which is, some of it was simply just updating where parking was allowed and not allowed, like on Biggins Street. Macon Avenue was in the downtown corridor, was not mentioned, and thought it was best to add it where it was allowed. There was a section on fines, which we added to coincide with other town parking violations. We changed a part of the section under Schedule 2, under parking time limits, was how out of date it referred to in front of the post office, which would have been EMS building across the road. And it was the post office. And then they simply, and then Schedule 3 was angled parking, and they changed it to simply say marked parking, so if parking was ever changed in the future, we wouldn't have to stay parallel to anywhere. It's just however it's marked. So they've done that, but then, from that hearing, you should have a memo in your packet. The planning board had some other issues that come up that wasn't, they didn't think was best addressed in Chapter 75, and simply was asking the town council to think about asking them to look at Chapter 73, which is some more of the, put more of the parking, you know, some more on parking. They could address some other issues that arose there in that public hearing on November.
Yes, Mr. Culpepper.
Do you know how many spaces we have along Main Street in town?
I did calculate. I don't remember off the top of my head. I calculated, I made a map. That was one thing we made. We made a map for on-street parking, our town parking lots, and even some of the private parking lots, the ones that are private, you know, behind peoples or people's. Out of 76. In the courthouse and so on. I know some of them were ranging, like, some of our town parking lots have, you know, they're in the 50 range, 50 to 60 ranges. The courthouse, I think, was in the 80 ranges, how many they had. I don't remember the exact number on Main Street, but yeah, we do have those numbers.
Did we find any other places where we could stripe? Because since we started doing this, or since the planning board was tasked with this, I've just been looking, you know, as I'm riding by. It looks like there used to be some stripes in some places where there's not stripes, like, I think Town Hall's one of them. So there used to be parallel parking going up and down both sides. Did the planning board find more parking places that can be striped in the future doing this?
They did not look at areas further. They, some of the, they wanted to probably look at a little more. I mean, some of the things that come out from the public hearing, there was a couple, there was, it was, a lot of the downtown merchants came. We didn't really have any other, you know, just residents come. You know, a parking garage was brought up, but it wasn't like we had, you know, we had like six feet of the hearing. So that was a parking garage, but I mean, that's, that's a major expense to think about. But there's all, they did discuss some potential, could mark some areas on Palmer, would be East Palmer. There is some areas there you could look at. We didn't talk about Kirk Town Hill or anything.
Would that be part of the review of Chapter 73?
Yeah.
I mean, if we can find more parking places and get a total number, I think that's knowledge, and that's good.
If you count on Town Hill, then stay full.
I parked there for the parade.
And nobody told you, you know?
But I'm worried I'm gonna get a ticket unless it's striped next time.
And I will offer this, the planning board had the work on this for a long time, and we also were on the cusp of getting a master sort of a plan, a comprehensive land use plan started, and that would include a look at parking. And they would, they would look at future, you know, development of areas that ought to be earmarked, and maybe, it might even, that's a place to look at, really ambitious thing, like, do we need a parking structure here? So there will be more, you know, I think you should ask the planning board to go ahead and study this generally, but it's also gonna be part of the comprehensive land use plan.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, so what I understand is we're sending this back to the planning board? Is that correct? Are we just accepting it as information?
Well, you have Chapter 75.
Okay.
I think if you wanted to, if you're happy, if the council was happy with the changes that we made.
Okay.
And then, if that board will, if you want us, Chapter 73 for them to review and add some other...
So you need a motion tonight on 75?
So, yeah, the proposed changes to 75 would be ripe for approval. You don't have to have a public hearing further on those. I did have one question. We have in Schedule 3 marked parking, and then you say marked parking on the following streets. I don't know that we're, that's the, you're only on Main Street, you have to park in the, it seems like you generally are gonna say you have to park within marked spaces. So I don't, if it would be okay to wait, one, and there's, I don't think there's that big a rush. Let's wait on approval on this, and let me suggest a change to that.
So we're gonna wait to approve this?
If it's all right with the council.
Okay, let me ask a couple more questions, if I may. What were the fines before the fine schedule?
I believe they weren't, there wasn't a defined fine. It was just guilty of a misdemeanor and shall be fined, I believe, is how it was. It was, there was no set fine, so that's why we went with what was on the current tickets, the parking tickets that we used.
What's the difference between a misdemeanor and a civic penalty?
So, you really want to open this can of worms?
I mean, a civil penalty is less harmful to a person.
Yes, and I think we're trending, that's another thing we're gonna look at, the ordinance review committee, is to virtually, and you don't have very many of them. We're gonna look at maybe eliminating all of the, except for one or two that are important to keep, misdemeanors.
So we don't need parking violations to be misdemeanors? That's where we're going with this?
Yes, you don't. And they generally are enforced as a civil fine. And I do think we, that's something we're gonna look at throughout your code, so.
So this is just for advisement. We're not taking any action on it?
I think we should hold off.
Mister Mina's a criminal.
I know it. It's kind of severe for parking violations.
I mean, that's awfully harsh for me to park on a non-marked spot on Town Hill without a misdemeanor.
Depends on if you abandoned the vehicle or not. All right, caused as a wreck, yeah. Okay, anything else on this? So where are we going? We're sending this back? We're voting on as amended?
No, sir. I would just ask the council for just a motion to refer all planning matters in the corporate town limits to the planning board for study, including Chapter 73 of the code.
Okay, all right. Okay with the board?
He says we need a motion.
Just a motion to that.
All right, let me have a motion to that effect, then.
I move, whatever he said.
Say what he said.
Are we authorized to go through Chapter 73?
And that's, I think that's what I said.
Okay.
It is.
Okay. All in favor? All right, let's take five, and I'm gonna time it, too. Okay, the next item, is everybody back?
Yeah.
Nope, Ms. McCray.
Five minutes wasn't long enough.
My five minutes are shorter than other people's. Here we go.
We've been talking about that for a while.
Yep. Okay, discussion on the Town Bridge Greenway Connection. Mr. Culpepper, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apparently, I'm not the only person that imagined the plan of the beautiful new bridge with the beautiful new walkway, and the walkway allowing the freeway to come across, and then go under the two bridges. Several people have mentioned to me that they thought that was the plan originally. I digress. I met with Summer and our engineer, Mr. Moore, and we talked to DOT briefly, and DOT seems to think that we were going to put the walkway under the bridge, and so they left it for us to complete. I obviously would like to see it completed, because I'd like to use the greenway, and I think it would behoove us as a board to help that project, if we may. Mr. Moore, do you want to tell us what you found out when you walked down there?
You went under the bridge where you found me, okay?
Oh, there's a map, too, here.
So as you can see, we just kind of drew a map of what essentially that a connection point to the existing greenway, if the shelter would be to the pedestrian path that was installed in the bridge. We had looked at some preliminary designs on how we could do this in-house for a small cost and do basically gravel walking path, and I believe that the logistics of that can be done in-house. What we would need to do, if the council were going to move forward with this, I would need to reach out to some other agencies about grading in the floodplains. So Army Corps, we need to reach out to. DOT has gave us their blessing to be under the bridge, and also, we need to reach out to the county because they own either redo that about grading on their property as well.
What's the cost estimate?
Minimal really would be man-hours and a couple loads of gravel on area.
I didn't have much time, but I did manage to get a load of gravel donated, so we got 16 tons. That's not enough.
I was thinking the same thing.
But I don't know how many we need. Three, four loads of gravel?
Yeah, if the state's okay with it, if the county's okay with it, if everybody's okay with it, is there a real downside?
I was with Dave. I thought this was gonna happen as part of the initial redo of the bridge, and I really want to see it done. I'd love to see this done.
Is there any way we can...
I'm so sorry.
Is there any way we could dress up that area a little bit? It's so creepy right now, that even if you had gravel there...
We talked about that, and Summer actually went out there, and I think she was impressed with how neat the area is between the bridges, and she's like, there could be a couple picnic tables down here, and it could really be a neat little spot. So I started getting big ideas, like, yeah, picnic tables, put some landscape trees in, you know, we can spend a bunch of money, but this, I think, would be the first step towards connecting the property between the bridges to the N'Kwasi Initiative, which can bring everything together.
You know, Lowe's calls us like every year wanting a project they can work on to better the town, and we usually send them to the memorial park, but they're always eager to beautify something.
Mr. Culpepper, let me ask you a question there, sir, if I may. Has anyone approached the county rec people to see if they could pitch in to make a joint project going in?
I had mentioned the idea to the rec director, Seth Adams. He said he didn't realize it was supposed to go under the bridges. That's the end of that discussion, but I think with it being a minimal, a minimal cost to us and a huge benefit to our constituents, I'd like to see us do something. I think the county would maybe come back later on and pave it, maybe with a more permanent structure in their scheme of things.
One question.
Yes, ma'am.
If it's gravel, will it withstand, you know, some of the flooding that we've had?
Oh, yeah. That's a good question. Would it wash away? No?
I mean, so where are we at tonight on this? Everybody seems to be... Everybody seems to be thinking it's a good idea, correct? What would be the next step?
I would think we need to give Nathaniel the, the go-ahead to reach out to those other agencies and see if it's even doable.
Yeah, we would need some, some other agencies to see if this is a feasible, if they would allow us to get in there to do that, and I think tonight would be, reach out, that you would give us permission to reach out to some other agencies to, to do some preliminary investigating.
I don't think you require a note, but I think consensus of this board is, let's move on it.
I make the motion that we allow Nathaniel to look further into this and be able to report back hopefully at our next meeting.
Yeah. Is that a second for you? Okay, all in favor? Okay, you guys got your project.
Thank you, Dave, for bringing that up.
Absolutely, yeah. Good show. All right, tax releases. Madam Manager?
This is Mr. Mayor and Council. You have a packet that I passed out. You've got two releases, and this is just kind of preliminary standards from the county. The first one is for Greg Kinsland. This is partially in the city and out of the city. The second is for Wells Fargo Financial Leasing. The county has emailed us, and we'll see your attachments, we're just asking for those two releases tonight.
Any questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and approve the releases as presented.
So, ma'am.
Second? Second? Okay, we have a second. All in favor? Did you get that, Mr. Talent? A second, okay. All right, approval of the 2019 Town Council Regular Meeting. Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. In your agenda packet, along with each of your desk areas, you'll see the proposed meeting schedule for the Town Council for the 2019 upcoming year, so we're just looking for a motion to approve that. That's just your regular meeting schedule. Of course, that doesn't include if you want any continuation or special meetings. This is just looking at the first Monday of each month. The one to note, of course, this year will be Labor Day, which will be Tuesday, September the 3rd. The others do continue to fall on a Monday.
Okay. Everybody okay with it? So I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Unless anybody doesn't like my six o'clock time slot and wants to change that.
You know what? I've been meaning to talk to you, this is a great idea, six o'clock. I think everybody is very happy with this. Is everybody okay with it? Especially when we get Vienna sausages for being here early? Yeah. No, you know I'm kidding. Okay. All right, I think we got a motion and a second and a vote, did we not? Okay, all in favor?
If I may?
You may.
I, I think we all enjoyed the retreat. Last year, we all kinda seemed we wanted to do another one, maybe even biennial. Can we look into scheduling one of those?
Didn't you?
Late winter?
Didn't you say you're scheduling one in January?
January.
I thought you said earlier.
It may not hit in January, but we'll be looking to have a meeting.
We'll have one way before budget.
Right.
We'll try to. It would be, if the council would like, what we could look, let me just make sure I understood you guys correctly. At our January, January, we'll look at having a joint meeting with the ABC Board, and then maybe February, before we get into budget, we'll have one to discuss issues with this board.
The one thing we need to watch for, no, I'm sorry, no. They moved the conference to May. I'm sorry, there was talk about January, but they've moved it to May. Okay. Okay, the holiday schedule, is that what we just discussed?
No, this would be a separate item, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and Council, that'll be Item J under eight new business. It's approval of the 2019 Town Franklin Holiday Schedule. That's in your agenda packet along, along each of your desks. This is just approval of the holiday schedule for the Town of Franklin, and this is the state holiday schedule.
Vote in for it.
Second?
All in favor? Okay. Council, you were up about a discussion on the Town of Franklin Comprehensive Plan, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. The process that we've been undergoing for quite some time now to find a consultant to lead you through the development of a comprehensive land use plan has resulted in the contract that's, that's before you enter your agenda packet. It real, I realized in, in thinking through this agenda item that, I don't know that I've ever shared with you, I think I've tried to explain to you the legal importance of this. There's practical importance to do this process too. But just in case you wanted it, this is a reading for you, this is from, and this is, I've given each this, this article that comes from the school of government and talks through where the law has been on having a comprehensive land use plan to guide your zoning decisions and where it's going. It already was sort of a presumption that you're gonna have not just a UDO nuts and bolts, what is a zone and what's allowed in it and what's a setback in it and so forth, but an overarching plan for the whole town and how it's gonna, that's to guide your zoning decisions within the UDO. Like I say, we have slid by without a, a per se comprehensive land use plan in the past. It's now gotten to where it's legally, and this, this article sets out a lot of the reasons why. It's just almost impossible to move forward in zoning without it. And if you look on the, the last page, there is a statute that is, this is the most recent change in the law that says, now when you adopt a change in your zoning map, you gotta say, not only, if you either adopt it, you gotta say why it jives with your comprehensive land use plan. If you turn it down, you gotta say why it didn't. So it just creates plaintiffs all over the place where there weren't any in the past and we, potential plans. So again, we really have to have a, a comprehensive land use plan to, to guide these zoning decisions in the future. There are also potential for some big ones to come forward in, in the not-too-distant future, so. On a practical level, if you, if you look through this contract for you, you can see the kind of a process, and I think it's not unlike what, what we did for the UDO and the principles of growth that, that got us there previously. Again, that's necessary, but not really sufficient for everything you've gotta do in zone. They are going to walk through a, first a planning phase of this and a public development and public involvement in this and to bring you up to date along the way. So this contract sets out what, what their intent, the way to do that is, and I haven't answered any questions you've got about it, but it's ready for adoption tonight. We heard back, there's, there's some changes in red that were my amendments to their, their contract, and we heard they have approved all of those. We just have to go through and get it into a final form. I'm having answering questions you've got about it, but it's ready for adoption.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may as well, myself and your land use administrator did have a conference call with this firm when we last brought this up after our last board meeting. The cost, I know one of the concerns and discussion points was, the proposal was for $85,000. We did ask about training because training was not included, so the total that you would be looking at is $90,000. The second question we did ask was if you could divide that up between fiscal years. They are willing to do that. You're looking at around a 12-month period, so if this was something council wanted to move forward with, hypothetically, let's say that it was, again hypothetically blessed tonight by council, the firm would be ready to start in January. It would, they would probably conclude their research by December, so we would make one payment of $45,000 in January, which would be in this fiscal year, and then your second payment would be the conclusion of your upcoming fiscal year. The third question that we did ask, I know some of you had some concerns about some of the plans we have on shelves, such as our parking study, our CIP plan for the Whitmire property, they have agreed to include that in their plan. We did ask about, and I know Ms. McRae had expressed an interest in historic preservation. They also agreed within their plan to look at historic preservation, again, that wouldn't be on a large scale as we had hoped, but at least provide the Town of Franklin with some guidance on that. So did just wanna kind of go over with the board, some of the questions that we did ask that I was aware of came up last time. Mr. Setzer, did anything else you can think of that we discussed?
I don't think it's all.
Yes, sir.
We don't have an alternative John, but we do. We did the UDO, we've got a lot of staff, I mean, we're gonna have to invest in one of these horses.
Yes, sir. Believe me, it brings me no joy to tell you you're gonna have to spend this kind of money on something, but it is, in addition to being something that I think you, for practical purposes, need to help guide your, your planning for the next 10 or 15 or 20 years for, for the way this town and the way the council sees it developing. At this point, and especially with some, the gravity of some zoning decisions that you might face soon, a zone, a zoning ordinance is not sufficient. And when you, when I tell you over two years you're looking at spending $90,000, I want you to compare that to a quagmire of a zoning decision that gets tied up in reports for the next five or 10 years, and that could well happen, and you're not, that's not gonna be covered under a general liability policy, so you're, there won't be any way but out of pocket to cover it. For, for every, for every reason, practical and legal, you need a plan like this, and I think that this group would deliver you a good one.
Earlier, I, I brought up a question about the Duke Power property by the Walmart. It's gonna apparently get developed. Does the comprehensive plan address growth in the ETJ, annexation, those type of issues? Is it gonna give us a long, broad picture of where that's going?
Yes. Where it talks about core, like entry corridors and so forth, that, that looks at areas like that and says, here's where, you know, we anticipate development of this type and how to, how to get your zoning plan, it's the nuts and bolts of how you, how you zone properties ready to, to deal with it.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
As, as this firm moves forward with this research, are they gonna be checking in with us periodically, or is this like a all at once at the very end?
This is weekly conversations with staff, there'll be several meetings with public, with council, and this will be an in-depth project.
And they'll be open to feedback from council?
Yes.
Okay.
They'll take us with them when they go out on field trips around town.
I'm sure they would.
So would you entertain a motion to hire these folks and then amend the budget? I guess, obtain earnings or whatever for the 40, well, I guess we'll have to do a budget amendment for this $45,000 for this year, wouldn't we?
You could. What your finance officer was looking at a moment ago was, in your contingency, something just for the board to think about, instead of dipping into your fund balance, you still have in contingency $50,789 if you would like to utilize this for that, for the first payment.
Didn't we have contingency left over last year too?
It's called contingency.
I, no, I, I understand, that's all.
I mean, we can start there.
Did you make a motion, Joe, or just propose one?
I'll make a motion, and I hate it, but I'll make the motion. Pre-selected that we go ahead and there's $90,000.
And that's all in?
It would be $45,000, this is go from contingency now, if we need to work on contingency later, with the understanding that we probably have to develop $45,000 incorporated into our next budget. Let's do it.
Second?
All right, a second. All in favor? Along those lines, just will mention that the league this year, when they held their conference of the type legislation we wanna see before the legislature, two things that they're really pushing this year, and Ms. McRae, you'll like these, is not only keeping the historic preservation, but increasing it. And also state funding for renovation of challenged properties. They use the word challenged, and I use rundown. So I just wanted to mention that, that these are two items that are high up on the leagues pushing the legislature for in the upcoming session. Okay, anybody else have anything else for the good of the cause? If not, we'll move to the announcements. The town employee luncheon is December the 14th at 12 o'clock here in this room. Town offices will be closed December the 24th, 25th, and 26th in observance of the Christmas holiday. And town hall offices will be closed Tuesday, January the 1st in observance of New Year's Day. And the next regular scheduled board meeting will be Monday, January the 7th, 2019. And we have a new member of the Fourth Estate, Jake. Welcome aboard, you're with the Franklin Press.
Yes, sir.
We're glad to have you, sir.
Glad to be here.
Good. All right, I'll entertain a motion. If there's no objection, to adjourn.
You wanna go around the board, see if anybody has anything to say?
I just did. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
All right, okay, well, let's do it again then, okay? Adam?
I know, I know.
Mr. Brandon? You, oh, you look like you had one. Okay, Ms. McRae?
I do have something to say, and I may be totally out there if I miss something at the essentials training, somebody'll have to refresh my memory, but I think we kinda saw here tonight where, I mean, I was saying about rushing in, about things, and maybe this kinda hit some of your stuff too, about discussing things. Maybe because I'm new and I'll learn about the time I go off the board, you know, I get an agenda and it says discussion. I come to the meeting and I think we're for discussion. Most of the time we are. But sometimes people are ready to vote on it, and I know we're not supposed to be discussing things behind the scenes, but, you know, if I come to this and I'm gonna vote on something, I want all the information. And I, I understand if you're discussing, but using tonight as an example, we discussed that last month, and it was back on for discussion. I had no information in the meantime, you know, unless I'm just out discussing. If there was an urgency in that, and we asked Ms. Woodard to come back and give us information, I mean, even the idea of you want that information before you come to the meeting, I just don't know how to kind of defeat some of the thing of coming to a meeting and I'm not prepared unless you just continue it over to another. I'm not trying to be argumentative about, I just want all the facts before I decide about something. And, you know, even if it's the thing that we don't like meetings and we need to have a called meeting, I just think there are important things that we're not kinda hitting on, and I think it's your retreat thing and stuff that we may be missing or not getting all the information, and that's, I don't know how to handle it, is what I'm saying.
You know, we've talked about it, is having a mid-month kind of meeting, but I don't know whether, you know, sometimes we get out of here in 35 or 40 minutes with everything accomplished, and then, like tonight, we have some in-depth conversation. That's something that I think that we can look at, and I, I do think that, I know the manager and myself both try to keep the board informed, I'm, I'm more inclined about the legislative matters that we, that we face and the issues. The only thing on the email things is, that I would emphasize, is when we send something like that out, you can, you can mail back your feeling to the originator, just don't hit reply all, because then you get into.
I think it's just a thing of sometimes, you know, I, I know we can't communicate with each other, but when you come here and you're sitting here between meetings and you put discussion, not any fault of theirs, but if you had discussion last month, we're just coming back with the same thing we did before with no more information than we had the last time, and it looks like maybe we're not making a good decision. I don't know how to handle that, but I just know anything I do, I'm gonna have to have the information.
I can, I, I agree with what you're saying. I can tell you how I, I don't know that I'm doing it right, so don't, don't do what I'm doing just because of that, but like, I've just reached out to DOT on things to ask them some questions and, and like, I called ABC Board Member and met with her, Ms. Patillo, after I talked about the ABC thing last time. I just, I don't know that anybody's gonna give us information other than we just gotta go bond for it.
Let, let, let me see if I can sort of clarify something that I've noticed. I think sometimes the school of government errs on the side of too much caution, that we can't talk among ourselves. And council, if I'm wrong, say so, but there is nothing to stop me calling Ms. McRae or her calling me or whatever, and one-on-one like that. I think the issue is if you gather as a, as a body as such. I think the issue is if you gather as a, as a body as such, I think that's where the catch comes in, but if you, if you and I want to talk, there's nothing says we can't talk. David and I talk quite often once in a while, I shout at each other, but we do, and that's fun.
And then I think if we were that kind of board, I mean, that open communication, it's all well and good to say we're doing this for the public, but if we're not doing our own job behind the scenes, I just don't feel that, that I come in with confusion about what to do because there's been no discussion.
The only exception, Mr. Mayor, what you said is, when it's a quasi-judicial matter, like a special use permit, I'm gonna make it my business to make sure you all know when you've got something like that, that you can't go just discuss with somebody, but otherwise, like you said, it's always this less than a quorum in this board, whether you're talking about in an email or online format of some kind, or in person, talking about more business, then you are more than authorized to do it, and you're encouraged to do it, it's a good thing to go out and find the legislative facts that you need to make a connection.
Are we stepping out of bounds when we reach out as an individual person, talking to another representative?
No, Lloyd, no. In fact, in fact, I think sometimes we need to do more of calling our representatives in Raleigh and Washington, and if we don't, how do they know what we're thinking down here? And, of course, it's a two-way street, too, I think sometimes they ought to reach out to us, but...
The only caution I give you about that is, don't, you know, keep in mind that you don't have authority unless you're sitting in a, in a properly-called meeting and are part of a majority vote, you know, you can't, you can't commit the board in any other town.
But you can give your opinion, yes, sir.
Three's not a quorum, right?
Correct. Yeah, you have to have four of this council.
So there's plenty of, it may be that just the personalities of the board don't lend themselves to as much as...
But I think you know what I'm saying. If you don't have some of that, you're gonna come in here and you're not gonna know what everybody's... I just wanted to make that...
No, and it's a point well-taken, yeah. Gosh, you know, I think the biggest problem business and government has everywhere in the United States is communication breakdown, sometimes we just don't talk with each other enough, so. Now, did I have a motion to adjourn? You've got...
We didn't get to David.
Final round of the board, just to remind everybody that December 31st, is that right? New Year's Eve, Crab Trees are hosting the third annual Ruby Drop? Is it third? Anyway, it's a really cool event, papers, please write about it, it's, everybody comes downtown, and we all hang out and count down the big, it's a pretty big ruby.
Mr. Collins and I discussed a resolution about that. We think that this board should pass a resolution that they do that on Greenwich Mean Time, and Mr. Collins, I'm gonna move it, 8 o'clock.
I'm on 9 o'clock.
On 9 o'clock, okay. Now, there you go, putting... Okay, what do you think else, Mr. Culpepper? Yes, Mr. Collins?
I'm moving adjourned.
All right, all in favor of adjourned, okay. Good show, guys, good show.
Thank you, everybody.
In spite of the thermostat.